John Peterson with HDR Engineering.
How's everybody doing today? Thank y'all for coming out. It's a nasty day outside, so I know that it took some effort to make it out here. Once again, my name is John Peterson. I'm with HDR. With me today, I've got my team. Ms. Knoppley, she's my lead engineer on this project. And I've got Arunia. She's also our lead EIT on this project. They have intimate knowledge of this project. So as we go on through the presentation, when we're done, I'll take the questions at the end of the presentation. I'm trying to make, make sure we can get y'all out and get y'all back home and try to speed this thing up as much as possible. Then we'll leave from here and we'll go to, we'll go to, back to the other room where we have the actual plans laid out on the areas where you can see what's proposed and where your house is and kind of where you can see how the project's going to lay out. So I want to make sure that if you have ample opportunity, we'll be here till the last person. The thing says eight, but we've got to stay till 10. I'll stay till 10 to make sure everybody has an opportunity to ask the question. Alright, so the presentation is going to consist of 10 different items. We're going to talk about the project timeline, how we got to where we're at today. We're going to talk about the actual project, the limits of the project, how it's going to go. We'll talk about the post storm sewer, go over the different packages. Package one, which is University. Package two, which is Rice, West, I'm sorry, Rice, Wake Forest and Duke Street. We'll talk about the tree protection plan. We know that West University, it's a beautiful place. It's a wooden enclave in the city of Houston area. So I mean, it's, the trees are just magnificent here. We want to do our best to protect it. We're taking measures of having a tree urban forester come in and we went back and made some changes to design to limit the impacts. We're also using construction methods to limit that impact. We'll talk a little bit about the traffic phasing, resident coordination schedule, and then we'll open it up to that point to questions. Alright, currently right now, HTNJ finished up a citywide master drainage project for the city of West University. This project utilized what came out a couple of years ago, which is called the Atmos14 data. This is hydraulic data that is more conservative based off of the new franked ran data that they've collected with all the new capabilities that people have. So it's a more conservative storm event. It's a larger storm event. So we're using that data to give a better cut level of service to the city of West University. West University has also went and looked at the actual storm sewer sizes and came up with a level of service that they want for everybody here in the, in the community itself. That level of service is between the storm sewer runoff and the storage capacity in the existing right of way. That statistically speaking, a 50-year storm event or a storm event that has a 2% chance of current a year, will be able to stay and hold in the right of way and not approach the structures, but stay within the right of way. That is the level of service that we're providing in this project. We've done a lot of public meetings already. Everything from when we did the PER. We've done a couple of council workshops, public meetings have been open, to council meetings. This will be our fourth presentation on this project to make sure that we're reaching out and giving people ample opportunities to come in and understand this project. Because the way that you define a good project is the citizenry's alright and happy and the council's happy with it. And the best way to do that is information and informing them and make sure everybody's aware of what's going on and what's going to happen. So right now today, we are right here. We are fixing to be at the town hall meeting, package one. So that's where we're at. Alright, as I always talk about these, level of service that we talk about, but the, the, the project itself is going to be University. It is package one. The reason for it to be split out by itself is there's a potential for the city to get federal grants to help ease the burden on the taxpayers here in the city of West University. In order to do that, the project must be bid and constructed and closed out by April of 2024. So that way, you can get the full benefit of the additional money that could potentially be coming from, from the grants. Now, if we were to do this all in one package, there's no way we could close that out. So that's why they were split apart. That's why you hear a package one, package two. So package one is just University by itself. Package two is Wake Forest, which is the north and south street, right here. And that is basically from Plum to Pemberton. Then you have Rice Boulevard from Wake Forest to Kirby. You've got a course, University from Buffalo Speedway to Kirby. And then also Duke from Kirby to Wake Forest. So those are the four streets. Again, three of the streets are in package two, one of the streets in package one to assist with the opportunity of getting funding and relieve some of the tax burden onto the residents of this community. We've had multiple, multiple discussions on these projects and just kind of, kind of roughly just want to touch the tops of them with it. We're going to upsize the pipes in this project. You can see that the pipe sizes is 60-inch down, University 48s, 36s throughout the other streets. Due to the fact that you have to mitigate your impacts to your downstream areas, we have actually engineered flow restrictors or actually flow control devices to where right now, you're going to get a benefit in your medium to small-size storms and a little bit of benefit of draining faster towards the end after a large storm. But we can't really release all that water downstream until we find off-site mitigation. And the city's continuously looking and coordinating with Harris County about the potential of getting that off-site mitigation to where we get the full benefit. So where are we at right now?
Can you go back as far as I can get a picture?
Sure. So where are we at right now? Right now, we have submitted the 70% drawings to the city and got comments back on the package one. We're continuing to move forward on that package. We're coordinating with city staff. We're coordinating with council's direction, making sure we're hitting those directions. We're currently coordinating with the city of Houston and also Metro. City of Houston will be redirecting traffic on Kirby. So we'll have to make sure that they're aware of what's going on. And also, they're doing construction actually on the other side of Kirby on University. So we want to make sure that we go first or they go first. We're not fighting each other and make sure that we do not go and redo something that they're going to do or vice versa. Because again, we don't want to waste public tax money. We want to make sure the left hand's talking to the right hand. And the only way to do that is through these coordination meetings and things. Also, the city has done a really, really fantastic job. It's amazing to see what West U has done on their street sidewalk inventory. They've actually did a citywide inventory on their sidewalks and identified any kind of deficiencies and labeled what they are. So we are going to address the deficiencies of some of the sidewalks as part of this project. On package two, the 75% submitted, submitted to the city. They're currently reviewing it. We're waiting on comments. Again, we have, we have continued with the design per their staff and per the recommendations provided by council. We are also coordinating with the city of Houston. Again, we'll get into the traffic control and you can see how we're reverting traffic around. We're trying to keep traffic on the major roads and out of the residential community as best as possible by providing detouring and things of that nature. We don't want people to go through these, these small, small little reduced streets. We want to keep them on Rice, keep them on University, keep them on Hulcon and keep them on Bissonnet. And then also again, we've got to coordinate with Metro on the phasings and get the bus routes identified with them. Now, one thing that we all know is how beautiful this community is. This is why people want to live in West University. It is, it is a wooden enclave. People take pride in the community. People want to live here because of the way, the, the way the aspects are, or actually the aesthetics of the, of the community is. So what we want to do is protect it. So one of the things that we do to protect that is we actually hire what's called an urban forester. The urban forester comes in, he goes and identifies each tree, not just some of them, but each tree. He identifies their type of species. Is this a red oak? Is this a live oak? Is it a water oak? Is it a con? Is it a palm tree? He identifies the diameter. Is it eight inches? Is it 12 inches? And he also identifies the condition so that we know what the, what the benchmark was prior to construction. Also, we know what the tree's condition is in case if the tree is in poor condition, is in the process of dying, we can take it down and save money while we're all out there doing projects. We take this document that they provide back to us, which will identify tree protection, tree protection, sorry, root pruning and clearance pruning so the trucks and vehicles don't hit the treetops coming through. As I'm sure you've seen several times in the community through the years, you know, trees continue to grow. So we'll go ahead and prune them. Plus, there'll be construction going on. So you don't want the excavators to hit the branches and rip the trees. So they'll be pruned off. And then also, we'll be doing a technique that we pioneered and is being accepted everywhere is the zero curb cut back where we can limit the amount of space that we have to stabilize the, the subgrade outside behind the back of curb by adding some additional rebar to provide a structural, more sound structural property into the paving itself. So once we get that information in, we take a look at it and we adjust the designs as best as possible to even try to help provide a better protection to the trees. So again, this is one of those things where I said before, the right hand is talking to the left hand. We're taking into account the tree protections, what we can do. And we're also coordinating with our design to make sure our design has the least amount of impact we possibly can have on this community and these trees. Now, one of the things that I want to go over is and let everybody understand is the traffic control and the phasing of this project. Now, on University, we'll be going first. We've been taking that out to bid and we'll get to schedule here later on. But we'll be taking it out to bid here towards the end of next month. And we'll be taking it to construction hopefully the first of the year coming out. We don't want to do anything during Christmas time. People will be having family come in and the last thing we want to do is tear out somebody's driveways right before all your relatives come in. That's, that's not good. That's not good, Gigi. Everybody's going to get upset about that. So the first thing we'll do is on the north side is the red. And all through these things, the red will be the first phase. Will be the, well, that will be the first phase. That's where the storm sewer is. That's what's going to take the longest because you can't just blow them go. You can't just tear up the paving, come in and stabilize it. You've got to dig and put down these big box culverts or these big, I'm sorry, round pipe. Most of the time, you know, you're limited to, to your construction on that. On like a 60-inch pipe, you're only going to get anywhere between 90 to maybe 120 foot a day, somewhere in there. So that's going to take the longest to put in. So when we are on the north side, the first side, basically what will happen is the flow of traffic, the north side will be closed off. We will continue to have a minimum of a 10-foot lane on the south side and allow traffic to come from the west side to the east side. We'll direct them to the north, down Rice Boulevard, to Buffalo Speedway and back around. That will be the traffic detour. Again, we're keeping people on the main roads with a little bit larger roadways, your Kirby's, your Rice and your Buffalo Speedway. Once the north side's done, they'll go around, spin around, come to the south side. The south side, they'll remove the concrete paving, get to the grades they need and pour the concrete. During that time, the same traffic loop will be done, but it'll be going in reverse. Duke Street, Duke Street's just a little bit different than these other ones. Duke is more of a residential road. It's not a cutthroat road through the community. It doesn't go from one side all the way to the other or anything like that. So typically, if somebody's going down Duke, it's because they either live on Duke or they live on one of these little areas, one of these little side streets here. So that one, because we're going to be deadening into Wake, we're going to take it to Wake, Pittsburgh, back to Buffalo Speedway. We'll be doing the first phase on the south side here. That's where the storm sewer is. We'll be laying in the storm sewer just like we talked about on University. Once that's done, we'll go over the north side and then the traffic flow will be the exact opposite.
The first is, the first side is the south side of Duke?
The south side of Duke, yes ma'am. That would be. Ma'am.
The pipes are going in the south side?
Yes ma'am. That's where the, the existing pipes are.
You've got the red arrows on the north?
Yeah, the, the red arrows are on the north. So that's, that's the way that you'll go. That will stay open so that you can have emergency vehicles be able to get access at all times. Your trash delivery will still be there. Your mailman can come. The mail's delivered by, by hand most, most areas in the city. So that shouldn't be disturbed. You'll be able to put the trash on the other side of the street to make sure that trash pickup is still valid.
You'll put it in front of your house and our guys will go across and get it. So you don't have to carry your, you don't have to carry your trash across the street.
So it's, a lot of thought has kind of been taken place to ease the burden on the residents. Again, we want to, we want to limit the disruption to your daily activities in this project. Looking at Rice Boulevard, Rice Boulevard will begin on this one. The storm sewer will be on the north. While that's going on, the traffic will be diverted down Rice on the south side to hit Kirby down to University. University will be done by that time. Come back around and that will be the, the traffic flow of that area. Again, we want to stay on Kirby. We want to stay on University and we want to stay on Wake Forest when we get Rice through University or these bigger cutthroat streets. We want to maintain that, that, you'll see that, that kind of mantra. Wake Forest, here, we're going to start on the west side, Wake Forest. While we're doing that, the traffic will be able to go north and we're going to send everybody all the way up to Bissonnet, come back down to University and that will be the traffic loop that will come on. Now, I'm not, I can't guarantee somebody that knows the neighborhood might go one way or, or cut through, but the signage that will tell people that are passing through the town, this is the way that you're going to go. You're going to go this way. So again, once they change, it'll be the exact same flow of traffic going back around the other direction.
I have a good question. If your driveway, if I live on the corner of University, Wake Forest and my driveway, inner my garage is on the Wake Forest, what, how does that work?
As we go along in the project, they, the, the, your driveway is going to be part of the project. They're going to remove the driveway up to the sidewalk. So there'll be a portion of about two, three weeks to where you'll have to park on a side street or park somewhere closer by while they get in there and try to knock it out as fast as they can and get you back in. Once the concrete's poured, then you'll be able to park next to your driveway until the driveway's poured. So there will be some time to where you're going to have to walk a little, little bit from, from where you parked to your house as construction is going on.
What do you do for people with electric cars that have a plugged garage?
That's a great question. It's a great question. We'll, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at that and work with, work with the city on trying to come up with a solution. Yes ma'am.
Could you clarify that a little more? Because we're on a street where our side of the street has the pipe, so it's going to be closed off. You said for two to three weeks, you can't park there. Two to three weeks in order to just get to the foot of your driveway? Would you still have to leave the car outside and can't get into the garage?
Yes ma'am.
So two to three weeks altogether or?
Well, what they do is we control the contractor. We hold him to an 800-foot, 500 to 800-foot strip to where he can't go in there and say like on this one, he can't come in. I'm just going to say Wake Forest right here. He can't start here and just carry all this out and everybody's inconvenienced. We're going to make him do it in phases, 800-foot phases. He'll do this 800 feet. During that time, they'll pull the concrete out, they'll pull the driveway out. They'll come in, they'll stabilize the material underneath it. They'll come and put the rebar in and they'll repour it. Once that cures, even before they pour your driveway, they'll allow you to park next to your house. So they'll be just like a, probably what, what are we seeing on Buffalo Speedway?
Three to four weeks. You notice Buffalo Speedway, they're going block to block and they're pouring the right lane and then they're letting people park there. They come back and pull out their aprons, get their aprons poured and then they, they have access. So while they're going, while they're going from corner to corner on Buffalo Speedway, these people have had to park on Pittsburgh or Duke or Kason or Carnegie and walk to their houses. But we try to get, we try to get the right lane poured just as quickly as possible. Then you get that, you get that set to grade and then you tie in the apron to that, to the, up to the sidewalk.
I'm just still trying to understand and remind how long I'm going to be out of my garage?
Three to, three to four weeks.
Three to four total?
Yes.
Out of the garage?
Yes. And it'll be scheduled and we put door hangers. We try to, we knock on doors, but we at least leave door hangers to let you know we're coming. We'll be, and you know, we'll be in this area next Monday. We're going to start from here and work to.
Our, our goal is to make sure you have ample time to make plans on where you're going to park or get your car. The worst thing you can do is you come outside to go to work and the street's gone. So we want to make sure you've got ample enough time to go and make the, make your parking where you need to be. Yes ma'am.
So you know, I was hearing about the driveways. What about the grassy areas on the right of way? Is that going to be used for workspace or?
No, no. We are going curb to curb, back of curb to back of curb.
Okay.
And aprons and that's it. There's, apron is, is the approach from the street to the sidewalk to your driveway.
Your driveway, your driveway apron coming into your driveway to go to the sidewalk.
Because the, because the grade of the roads are probably going to change for this drainage. So your, your driveway's got to go and match back up whether it's higher or lower with the road. So we're replacing all of that with this project. And any sidewalk that is a trip hazard, something or whatever, that's all being taken into consideration in this project.
So when, when it's done, you'll see a new concrete roadway and then your driveways will be new up to the sidewalk.
So all curbs are being replaced?
Yes, yes, yes. But we are not digging outside the curb.
Yeah, we're staying, we're staying.
Now, if the elevation changes and they have to grade it, grade it to smooth it out so you don't have this much of a lick from the top of the curb there long, we'll replace that with sod. Any sprinkler systems, irrigation that's, that's broken because they're next to the curb, even our guys do that quite often when they're doing a water sewer repair, will be replaced. As soon as, if they don't notice that they did it because sometimes these things are covered up, please let us know. We will, that contract is to be part of the job to repair any irrigation that's, that's damaged.
Yes sir, you've had.
Yeah, the last time the city did this after Allison, we moved in in 2001 and you redid University, Lord and all that other stuff. In the process of doing that, you took three feet away from the width of my apron. What they re-poured was 18 inches narrower on either side. And the quality of the concrete that was poured is horrible. It's broken back to the rebar in a bunch of places all along the curb. Are you going to get a better contractor to pour the concrete?
Yes sir.
Were you aware of the issue?
No, I'm, I'm not. Myself, I am not. And I say I'll come out and look at it tomorrow, but we know we're going to replace it with this job, so.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm right at the head of front and got two huge trees that you've got marked there with numbers. You're going to be digging behind the curb to do that. The last time you did it, you messed up royally.
Well, we won't this time. Yes ma'am.
Yeah, when the city forced me to have a sidewalk in front of my house.
Yes ma'am.
They cracked, you know, they cracked my sidewalk going to my house and refused to fix it. So I mean, and I'm trying to communicate with the city. The city will not work with me at all.
Have you got a pen with you?
And so I do not trust all this process.
Have you got a pen? This is my curb. You reach your address down on there. I'll be by tomorrow and we'll talk about that.
Could you, what, what is an apron? Is this a whole grass?
No, no, the apron is just the concrete that, from your driveway, from the sidewalk to the road. So you have the apron, the little bit of sidewalk and then your driveway, the rest of the way. It's the change of grades where you come off of the road to go into your driveway. And so that'll all be, that'll all be replaced. It's all in the, in the right of way, like the sidewalk. And because of the road, the grade of the road may change, your apron may come in higher or may come in lower. So we're just taking all the aprons into consideration on this job and replacing them so they, they match up properly.
Are you going to restore my driveway to the way it was?
Yes sir, I will. We'll look at, we can, we can look at old, thank you, and I will be out there tomorrow.
I got the blueprints from when the house was built.
Perfect, we'll look at that and we'll make sure that's in the plans.
And I have a question.
I've got one back here and then I'll be right back with you ma'am.
I'd like to clarify a question on the city right of way and the grassy area?
Yes.
On Buffalo Speedway, the project has been using some of that city right of way to store rebar equipment and things like that. Will any of that be happening in that kind of grassy area in these projects?
On Buffalo, I think they were only, we had to tear up a lot of buffalo to put in water line. So seeing that they tore it up and had to restore it, they, they stored, they stored a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of stuff there. But they've been told and they've been pretty good at keeping stuff out off the curb or in the returns that they, when they haven't opened up the street yet. But I really haven't noticed a whole lot of storage between the curb and the sidewalk in any places that they haven't done anything other than a storm drain inlet or, or that. But yes, we will keep that in mind. We don't, we want to do as little damage as possible.
If it needs to be done, I just think a clarification for people being aware of this.
And, and one of the things that we have in our contract to kind of control the contractor on these projects is, is the sod replacement will have to be done no matter what. At the end of the project, if it's disturbed, it will be taken care of. Also, sod is incidental. So it behooves the contract not to lose money to tear up as little bit as possible. So when you put the.
For those of you that don't know, incidental means we know there's going to tear up a little bit. So that's incidental. You put it into, you put it in your price for, for doing the road. And that means they're not going to tear up a whole bunch of stuff to get paid for extra grass.
Because they, because they can't, they're, the more they tear up, the less profit they make. So it's a controlling mechanism.
Yes ma'am, yes sir.
I've lived here about 70 years or more and the flooding, I mean, we get an F for flood control and the streets fill up with water and so people pull their cars off. But now with all this disruption, there's going to be more traffic in the streets during the height of the hurricane season. So I mean.
Hurricane season ends November 31st, 30 days, September, November 30th and doesn't pick back up again until June 1st. So we're, it starts, it's going to start right after the first of the year.
Okay.
And we, we will be working through next, next one, yes. But hopefully we'll get some of the major drainage downstream done to mitigate anything that comes, comes in.
Okay. I thought you said University was starting January 1st.
Yes.
When is Duke start?
That's probably, we've, we've got drawings to design and this and that and then we're going to have, so probably about four months later.
How long does the university take? You didn't tell us that.
We have to be done by April of 2024.
So University of Oregon alone will take a year and a half?
It's like 15 months.
Yeah, this is, in order to, I mean, in order to try to keep traffic flowing and make it as least inconvenient as possible. Now, we can't just, you know, shut down University and start ripping and going and, and, they have to take a whole lot, but we, a whole lot less time. But we're trying to go in phases, get as many, get the driveways open as quick as possible, not direct, you know, not run down the whole block all the way to Vanderbilt and then just put everybody out until they start between Vanderbilt and Belmont or something. You know, so it's scheduling. We've got to remove the old stuff. This is a deep dig. There's a lot of, a lot of earth to move and, you know, before we, to set the new 60-inch pipe. So it's, it's going to be time consuming with trying to keep traffic flowing and dump trucks coming in and out and delivery trucks coming in and out. This is a little slower process.
I've got a slide showing all the scheduling and stuff. So if, if we, I'll take one, yeah.
So when the Buffalo Speedway project was put around, when was, what was the projected length of that and what is it now?
A 30-month project and it'll be done in less than two years.
But that's all, multiple phases.
You said Duke was going to start in April 2023?
April or May.
April or May.
That's what, that's what we hope, if everything goes well.
Okay, in other words, you said you're going to hire an urban forester?
We already did. They, they hired an urban forester. The city has its own urban forester.
Yes.
But he doesn't work for outside contractors. But he doesn't work for outside contractors. They hire their own urban forester to do the survey and to do the tree protection plan. And then our urban forester approved the tree protection plan.
Are you going to talk about that?
Uh, the, yeah, uh, like I said while we go, uh, he goes and identifies the trees, the sizes of the tree. You identify the quality of the tree as far as what condition it is and poor, fair, good condition.
And so you see, is he, cause you mentioned that before, I'm sorry for interrupting. Um, I guess my question is, is it just in the right of way?
Yeah, it's just where we disturb within the city right of way. We're only looking at impacts to the city projects, that the city would have impacts on this.
And if we have a tree that kind of is within the city right of way, not really, I mean, we had a tree, I saw him, so I talked to him. Um, I think he's going to put my tree, I mean, he, he didn't even have it on his thing, that was.
Yeah, anything that.
That I was real concerned about. And that's for protection.
Right, it's for protection.
It's for protection.
Yeah. So like I said.
On, on the university drawings that we have out there, they're not complete, they're not this far along with the, with the other, with, uh, with Duke, Wake Forest and Rice. They'll have all of this on those sheets out there, identify the type of tree, the size, what condition it's in. And on those sheets out there, we show you that after the presentation.
Yes.
So we show you that after the presentation.
So that'll, that'll be kind of example for that, those of us there in the Duke package two.
It'll be the same thing.
It'll be, that's going to be what comes when that gets finished or that.
Sorry, your comment about replacing grass that gets torn up?
Mm-hmm.
Not everyone has grass in that right of way. For example, we've got two big shade trees there, so we've got jasmine.
Yes, that'll be, that'll be.
Well, when you narrow my driveway by three feet, I had to replace that.
Yes, sir.
And the other?
Yeah, I don't know what to say about that one.
Okay, I kind of related to that is, um, cause having lived through the Wake Forest rebuild, what, what was that, twenty years ago, whatever it was? Thirty years ago? I don't know. It was a while back. Um, is there specifications of what kind of sod is used and like what happens if the sod dies?
Palmetto St. Augustine.
Because it didn't match with what we had before.
Palmetto St. Augustine is a St. Augustine that handles shade a whole lot better. So that's what we're specing into, into this project.
I have an overriding question. Uh, we live on the corner of Brockton and Duke and as someone said earlier, it tends to become a river and cars are constantly getting just stuck in the middle of it. When this is over, is the plan with this fifty year storm, that there won't be any of that at all? Our street will look like everybody else's street with a little water and a battery?
We're saying during a fifty year event, it'll be within the right of way. So what's happening right now is when, when the city was designed in the thirties, everything was doing just fine because there was nothing around and it went straight down to Graves Bayou. But everything's built up for, over the years. And now we've got more water coming in from the north and more water getting into our, our outfall, which is not really ours, but the outfall we use between us and Graves Bayou. And so now we're building these large pipe with what's called restrictors in them. So if you have this big round pipe, we'll have this thing in the top that'll only let so much water go through. But when we are able to mitigate, when we get offsite detention or we trade with Harris County Flood Control or something, we can just easily go in there and pull that out and let all this go downstream. So we're taking care of everything that, you know, into a hundred year flood to keep it in the right of way for the future. It's not going to happen right now until we get offsite, until we get other mitigation for the, to. You, you can't, I can't take my, my buckets of water and put it on your property. I can't build up my property and say heck with it and throw it on yours. And Wes, you can't do that either. So we're looking for places where we can either get a detention pond or get credits for it. And as soon as we get that, we can take out what are called these restrictors that are being put into the pipe now. Cause we don't want to have to go and go back later and put in larger pipe again. So we're putting in the pipe we need now with the restrictors so that we can just go inside the pipe, not even have to dig down to it. Go right inside the pipe, pull them out and let it go downstream.
But if I understand what you're saying, it's when we get these ponds somewhere else to let the water go. Uh, every time there's a storm that's really bad, the water can still go up to the sidewalk.
Yes, it can.
Which means cars are still going to be, uh, stuck in the middle of the side of the street.
So I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say this is solving all the problems now. When we get offsite, when we get offsite detention and we pull out those restrictors, it will. But I mean, we have a lot more volume, so the smaller events, the ten and twenty-five year events, you'll notice a heck of a difference. All right, we get the bigger events, it's, might be a little bit of the same old story. It won't be as bad as it was.
And is it designed to flow that way? Like on Duke, it flows down toward Wake Forest and then it goes?
Duke flows toward Buffalo and it goes to.
Some of those big ones goes towards.
Well, that's where, that's where, that's where everything says it's supposed to go. That's where we're designing it to go. Where University, um, Rice, uh, from Wake Forest West it goes to Kirby. And they have a big fourteen by twelve box on Kirby that we, we share with City of Houston. And from Wake Forest, uh, West goes to Buffalo Speedway.
But the smallest pipes are where I live. So we have the, we don't have equal sized pipes throughout the city. And once again, I, the east side is shortchanged by West University leadership.
Well, this is what we're taking care of. We're trying to get these.
But it's a smaller pipe. I have a picture of the.
No, 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 I mean, the pipe that we're putting in now.
Thirty-six.
Sixty, pipe we're putting in now is five foot tall. Okay, if you're five foot tall, you can stand up beside the sixty inch pipe. It's a big round pipe and, uh, no, what we're installing, not what's in there now, what we're installing. And you probably got.
I think what she's talking about is the reconstruction part, whereas the thirty-six inch pipe on Rice is being replaced with another thirty-six inch pipe.
We're restoring.
It's a good city pipe.
Yeah.
In my area.
Yes, the, the, the city wide, the city surveys told us what size pipe need to be there. Some of the pipe are going to stay, some of the pipe have to replace. Some streets had no pipe at all and they're going to get pipe.
But then if you get a situation like South West Street where there are homes flooded on South West Street, because I put fewer of these.
Right. We, we have a drainage west project going on and before that starts, we'll have another town hall meeting. But right now we're going to, we're going to work on this, on the seaside drainage. Okay, John, I'll let you.
All right. All right. So what we want to make sure that we coordinate everybody with is we want to talk about how we're going to do the intersections. Intersections will do, uh, basically in quarters so that you'll always be able to have emergency vehicles be able to come through at all times to get access to your properties. Uh, we'll also make sure that it's ten foot wide, so with that, again, you're, you can get your ambulance down there, fire truck down there, wherever we can get down there, you can get down there through the, through the construction zone. Uh, like I said previously, the mail and waste use hand delivered, uh, so mailbox don't allow the front yard or city ordinance, so this shouldn't affect your mail. Uh, trash and recycling and waste will be collected normal on schedule, as Danny said, staff will go and take it, ferry it across the street for y'all, so y'all aren't trying to walk across the construction zone during that time. Now, as we talked, uh, for the package one, uh, we're going to have, uh, bid ready documents hopefully towards the end of October. We'll bid, uh, towards the end of October. Uh, we're looking at beginning of January coming up. So the city is, is moving forward with this project. We wanted to make sure that you get like a great comment. What are you going to do with the electric cars? Fantastic comment. We'll, we'll have to get back to you on that, but that's why we have these, these meetings. Thank you for that. And we're going to start seeing that more and more. Uh, that's the first time in twenty years I've ever had anybody bring that up, but it's, it's fixing to be.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's fixing to be more commonplace now. Uh, so once we get started, like I said, the, the construction phase for university, because we are controlling the contractor, we're not allowing him just to rip and go. If we just got out of his way and everybody was inconvenienced, it could be a shorter time. But we're trying to maintain it where you're on out of your driveway and got a mud hole in front of your house longer than you absolutely have to. So it'll be about fifteen months. On package two, which is Wake, uh, Rice and Duke, that total project's around about twenty-four months. Now, we're going to try to stagger those to where we can start working on, uh, certain streets to allow the traffic to continue to, to move because we don't want to have traffic detoured, detoured through traffic zones. That's, that's a recipe for disaster because they're going to have people come in with a dump truck and stop and load or drop the pipe off. So you don't want to do that. So you want to make sure that you stagger these accordingly to, again, have the least impact. So the cities already kind of came up to, uh, a, a way to get this information out. And we've got a couple of these. You can scan this and it'll be a, a way that you can receive information and put your name in and contact it. Uh, again, if you live on that street, we'll continuously coordinate with, with y'all. Uh, the contractor will be notifying y'all as they come through, when they change the water line or when they change, uh, change the drive, pull your driveway, pull the road out, you'll be notified. Constant communication. Uh, we do have Danny's number right here. He said he didn't mind if you called at four o'clock in the morning. So, uh, and we also have the city capital project manager, uh, Ed from that. So we have that information.
Yeah, we, we have handouts.
We have handouts out there.
So I'll give this right now.
Can I have something to you?
Yes.
Cause I can, I can.
Yes, sir.
I have a good question. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
So there's going to be a fair time when you're not reporting on your driveway.
Absolutely, yes.
If we have an electric car, what will we charge?
That's the second time it hasn't.
I'm driving your house.
That's right. Yeah, hopefully our house isn't running on the same.
So we know we have two electric cars here. Pardon me?
The electric.
Yeah, yes. On the side of the street with the culvert still in, will that be three or four weeks? As well as are going to be longer on the side of the drainage pipe side?
Uh, no, we're going, we're going to make sure that they all, they move along, you know, yeah. It might, it might be quicker on the other side of the road. It'll be slower on yours. Yes, sir.
Presumably the driveway will be unusable while you're putting the boxes in.
Absolutely, that's why we're talking.
Three to four weeks to pour the concrete.
No, no, three, we'll get past it, then they'll come do the base and they'll get it to grade, do the base, form it, still, pour, come back, do your apron while they're still moving along with the.
Worst case scenario.
From the time I lose my driveway until I get it back, it's four weeks.
That's, yes, that's what we're hoping.
Weather, weather cooperate, you know.
Yes.
It seems to me that there was a big staging area by St. Vincent's with Buffalo where they had mounds and mounds of dirt. Where will that be?
Don't know yet. They're going to have to find their own staging area. And, uh, they happen to use, they happen to use Holcombe, I mean, Buffalo Speedway south of Holcombe. And, uh, because the project at that intersection was going to take so long, they, they use that for staging. Uh, they had to reduce the traffic there anyway, so they used inside the traffic control to stage. I have no idea. They haven't, they're going to have to, uh, have to tell us where they plan on doing it. We have to approve it.
I was going to say, you have to approve this?
Yes, yes.
So this is a little off with just the, the, but since we're going to take the time to rip up the street and it's probably one of the most important arteries for the whole neighborhood, has been any thought about beautifying university? Like the pavers they have in front of the school for the sidewalks, like the medallion they have in front of the school for maybe Wake Forest to university? Since traffic flows already going to be broken up?
Do we have any pavers out there existing now?
I don't think so.
I mean, we're, we're putting, we're putting, uh, Buffalo back with the pavers at the intersections. I don't think we have any pavers right now on university on this side.
We're going to tear the street up. And was there any thought about maybe visual enhancing?
I myself, no, we have not thought of that.
With that potential, you're reporting to the budget?
Uh, we could bring that up and, and ask if, if, if council would like to do that.
And then the other thing for council to discuss is since we are going to be breaking in traffic flow. Personally, I feel, I live on university, Belmont University and Wake Forest University. If you go from Edlow on University West all the way to where it ends, every intersection has a stop sign. And Belmont University and Wake Forest University have a lot of.
University?
University in Belmont and University of Wake Forest.
No, that, that's a, that's a major collector. I don't believe, we could do a traffic study, but I don't believe that'll, that'll, uh, that'll constitute a four-way. We don't have a four-way at, at university and, and West Point. We do have, have it at, uh, at Academy. There is no stop sign. At Rice or University at West Point, I know that. And then there's the stop sign down in community because it's a T-intersection.
So is there any thought putting in stop signs there in Belmont?
Um, I, I don't believe that would, that would help traffic at all. I think that would hinder traffic myself, but we could, we could have a traffic engineer look at it.
Drive Metro crazy.
Huh?
You have to do a traffic law study on that.
Yes, we would, I, yeah.
You can't just put a stop sign. You have to actually physically prove the stop signs required there.
Yes, ma'am.
So you mentioned that you broke up package two packages with hopes of needing federal lending. I'm assuming that package one is more likely to be coming because there is a bus line going up to university and?
It's, it's. Package one, we need package one, it's in order to do Wake Forest period. So Wake Forest ties into it. So package one has, package one is doing the most impact and it's large enough to be able to, be able to acquire the federal, the, the, uh, the grant funding.
You'd totally utilize the federal lines.
I'm also assuming that federal money comes with strings attached? What do you expect the students to be with the buses along university?
Oh, no, no, no. This has nothing to do with Metro. This is all funding after Harvey and everything that's still left over FEMA funding. So this is just flood mitigation. This is, this is all it is. And I say, we have to do university to get way, we could do Duke by itself, but it's not a larginal project. And university from, from Buffalo to Kirby has to be done before we can tie in at Wake Forest. And so that's, that's the part of the job that we, uh, went for the grant funding on and we, and the engineers concentrated their timeline at the beginning. But no, this is not Metro funding. It has nothing to do with buses.
So as I stated before, uh, we'll be glad to all walk over to the other rooms. Uh, again, the, the project's laid out with aerials for every street, uh, where you can take a look and find your house and find what's going on. And we'll be glad to talk to everybody.